Twenty-four, please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber and alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a point, allow for a point of personal privilege before we get started on Board of Equalization. I think Commissioner Morgan had something to say. Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you. As you can see, Roger Garcia is not here this morning and due to the death of his untimely death of his father in Los Angeles, and I'd like to suggest that we have a moment of silence and some prayers for his father and his family.
We'll now commence the Board, the County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B on the agenda, A being, excuse me, A being approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, or excuse me, yeah, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item of business are Resolutions C through G, I believe, which can include adjournment. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Was there anybody here to speak on any of these resolutions? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now commence with the Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
First item of, the first item of business is approval of the minutes for the Board of Corrections meeting held on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next item of business is the Director's Report from Director, Corrections Director, Mike Myers. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I have a little issue this morning. As you may remember, I noted that Karen Beederman retired last month, and I had, I'm guessing this was a result of somebody substituting in for her. They printed the wrong month. This is last month's report. So if I may, if we can reschedule my presentation for next week, I don't have any of the, I just saw this as I was in the chamber this morning when I opened it, that it was the incorrect month. So my apologies. If we can do my board report next week, we'll be ready to roll.
Motion to hold over till next week by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Can we just do a voice vote on that real quick, then?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All right, motion to hold this over till December 17th passes five to zero.
My apologies, I'll see you next week.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we'll now commence with our Board of Commissioners meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Rogers?
Second.
Oh, wait a minute. Second by Commissioner Morgan. Sorry, Mr. Store.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. Just very quickly, I'd like to point out that, yes, I understand there is an emergency that's still so-called running, but Board of Corrections was not on the agenda today, and I guess you have the right to insert those at the last minute without notice to the public. But if that's the case, then we, the people, would like an emergency slot before you to discuss certain things, specifically the Open Meetings Act and the 2020 election.
Larry, the Board of Corrections was on the agenda. Thank you. Now, we will commence with the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
We have to switch out the terms.
We have to, we have to vote on that?
No, adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I do have a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
All right, and I'll start the voting right now. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now, I think we can commence with our Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business, minutes and claims. First item of business are items 1A, approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, and B, approval of claims submitted for payment processing through Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next item of business is our consent agenda with items A through L. Do I have a motion and a second for discussion? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, and Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes, thank you. On item A, did we have a report, or do we have a report that there was a conversation between the Police and Fire Insurance Association and Alliant? If not, I'm going to ask that this be laid over again.
I don't know.
Commissioner, when you say report, what do you mean?
It was requested last week that there be a conversation between that group and Alliant because...
And there was, yes, there was.
What's the outcome?
That they're okay with it. They actually, the last email...
Patrick, could you identify yourself?
Patrick Blimmingdale County Administrator. The last email chain I got from Karen Butch was that the Alliant representatives said that they thought it was a good program and that they're okay with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, or Commissioner Borgeson. Is there, are there any other Commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Boyle?
I do have a quick question on that, too. I think Karen Butch was, had some questions, too. So as Alliant says it's okay, I don't know if Karen is around to acknowledge that she's okay with it as well.
She is okay. I don't know if she's online, but she told me that she is okay with it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Any other questions by Commissioners? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the table?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next on our agenda, there are no recognitions and proclamations today. We also have no presentations. That would be item, Roman numeral four. We do have a, we do have, we do have a public hearing. Next item is, business item A, to open the public hearing to vacate eight portions of right-of-way along South 190th Street and Jones Street within the Grove Ridge addition to, to public comments, with action to be taken Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. I believe the Engineers' Office, and not Todd Fitzer, but please come forward.
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. When Grove Ridge was originally platted, it included on-street parking along 190th Street and Jones Street. That property has since changed hands. The vision of the new owners does not include on-street parking along 190th Street and Jones Street. So we are just asking for the removal of the right-of-way, portions of the right-of-way that were originally set to accommodate the on-street parking. Let me know if you have any other further questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions from Commissioners at this point? Commissioner Boyle?
Does that inhibit the neighboring properties as all?
No.
Does, okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions, the action is to, to be taken Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. There's no reason to vote on this, I'm assuming, so we can move to... Yeah, sorry, Mr. Clerk. Close the public hearing, thank you. Is there a motion to, or do we, okay. Close the public hearing on item A. We should vote?
No, just go on.
All right, now we can go on to the committee discussion and action. Under the Finance Committee, we do have the Budget Report and Monthly Fee Report as Item G, under Human Resources, we have the Weekly Personnel Report as presented, and it's my understanding we do have need for an executive session for litigation, and I believe that's it. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn and go into executive session?
Not adjourned.
Not adjourned? Motion by Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
And second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Litigation?
Motion to recess an executive session passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're in executive session.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.